United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father who art in heaven, dear Lord God, it's once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise for your dear son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We thank you, Lord God, for all of your many blessings bestowed upon the city of Dillon. Dear our God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor pro temp, our city council, our city manager, and city department heads on tonight as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. We pray in everything we do, we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Um, I can get a, uh, approval to the agenda now. Get new business, there's, yeah, different change, we got ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen, uh, is gonna be added to that at the top, and then, um, we'll have a second session for the fact of the matter. Can I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all those, thank you. Okay. Approval of the ordinance for, uh, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Was the favor, not. Um, I don't really have a lot to report, um, and, um, you know, we're, we're, we're kinda moving forward, it looks like, uh, a little bit on the, um, fines for having vacant buildings, uh, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Um, uh, and it looks like that, that this is, we're not recreating the wheel on that, so, um, maybe we'll, uh, have an opportunity to, uh, sorry, have an opportunity to, uh, at least pressure some of these people to, you know, up, upgrade. I'm, I'm not sure if you've got your building to code and it's not, um, and it's not raining, what do you, I mean?
We'll work through that, yeah, and that's one of the things that I'll bring up in my report is if you're asking which you, you know, you hired, earned, you know, it's something that we can work through to determine, see how I'm handling that.
All right. Um, the, um, I don't, I don't, I don't have a lot, um, and I'm, I'm a little bit amiss of that, uh, I wish, I wish I had more to, more to talk about, um, I, I think maybe, uh, we as a council might, might be a little more aggressive in the agenda about what we have and what we wanna do in the next year, um, certainly not my agenda, look at the agenda of the, uh, of the council, um, it looks like, uh, and we'll go over this in finance, just as we're looking at our budget, it looks like the two percent money is, uh, uh, coming in well, we're paying, and we've got, uh, Zaxby, they're, they're, have begun their, uh, renovations, so, um, that would probably be more out in here. So we, might look at down the line, what we wanna do there, and then also, uh, understand that we have possibly some funding for downtown development that Todd alluded to last, uh, last time, uh, last meeting, so, um, you know, we just, if, if, if these, these funds are out there, I wouldn't wear them, you know, that were out there, then, you know, we need to take advantage of it and do a block at a time, we don't need to do the whole downtown, but do a block at a time and, and, um, let's have.
Let's clarify, are you speaking of funds that were on the state, correct?
Yeah.
That represented Hayes to talk to him about?
Correct. Not, not being rude, Dr. Wallace, um, but I had mentioned something to Glenn about getting with the county council, you know, let's try to come up with a plan because Main Street's a new encounter, and see if they will be willing to give some money, I know Todd went down his field for Main Street, um, but I think the council, we city council, should meet with the county council, we got two more, three million dollars.
We'll get somewhere around three million.
They get six million, they see if they'd be willing to throw some money in the kids' too, to help us with this, uh, project.
Possibly.
Yeah. Did you do anything with that money?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Possibly. Don't wanna count that out.
Not making, all you can do is say no.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I don't wanna owe you. Um, the, um, but I.
But now, with that being said, we, along with the county, when it comes to tax base and school district, we, we, we do benefit, should just benefit our tax base.
That's about all I have. Um, please?
Well, we'll tell you, even though you just bring it up, anything like COVID, I was on a phone conference Friday afternoon with the DGA, and their contractor, they wanted to use the wellness center, um, to start doing the testing on a daily basis, um, that includes suns from nine to four P M., I told them that was fine, but they wanna do it through the parking lot, it ain't the end of the building, probably get a drive-through and COVID testing site, and I asked them why, and they just felt like their, in all their locations, using the health departments, they just been overrun and unknown staff, so, they're going out to, yeah, outside contractors, so they'll have a testing site here, probably the next two weeks.
Well, I can give you a little update of my own experience and what's kinda going on around, uh, around our, our community and around the United States, um, the Delta variant is like more aggressive, uh, variant, which probably the next new variant is gonna be a little more aggressive than that, that just means they're more contagious, doesn't mean that they're, uh, uh, more destructive or, or, or will kill you quicker, they're just, they spread quicker. Um, in my personal practice, our, our day, I mean, everybody's been overrun with all these cases, it's not happening in our practice, I've got an old practice, and, and I'm not bragging, but most of my people got vaccinated, um, and if you, if you get vaccinated, I mentioned it last time, you, you, you probably are gonna be fine, um, there are very few that have died that haven't had the vaccine, and most of them have been critically ill before they got COVID, so, um, uh, vaccination, you know, I think you see on TV, this, it, it sounds almost like they're, they're, because they're mandated vaccination, the, uh, there's, it, it takes on a negative connotation, vaccination is good, freedom is good, so you, you got to be contradictory, uh, yet they, they should be synonymous for the freedom of our people, um, you're free to get a vaccine, and, and right now, I'm not sure that I demand that you get a vaccine, but the vaccine is, is good, and the vaccine is right, um, if you're a fifteen-year-old boy, I wouldn't get the vaccine, you know, the cost, the risk of myocarditis, if, if you're a twenty-five-year-old, uh, either way, then get the vaccine, so, um, the younger people are gonna probably be okay if they get even the Delta variant, or the new variant, um, it's, it's the old, the sick, the fat, you know, they, they'll do it, those people just don't do it, so, if you, if you fall into that category, get vaccinated, and if not, um, Delta variant, maybe our godsend, uh, to, um, you know, get herd immunity throughout our community and eventually this thing will be gone, I think aggressively as that's moving through the community, then we'll probably look at a downturn in the month, mid-October, um, but that's, that's about what, what's going on with, with that.
Chief Lady Danielle Weller, today's in the state, being applied for a grant to upgrade our body cameras and the storage system for that, a total estimated cost to do that, city five thousand, the state has awarded us sixty-five thousand, which leaves the city's portion of ten thousand, but we also have a pot of money that we can get through the SMIRF first, which is our insurance carrier, um, up to eight thousand, so there may be just two thousand dollars that we'll have to spend out of pocket for this, so we should be seeing something here in the next couple of months on changing our body cameras and upgrading those. Police Department is also working on getting funds through the USDA, which is a grant that it applied for years ago on withdrawal projects, um, we're trying to get some funds to help them, even though we got a budget, we haven't purchased them yet, in the new police department, the most we'll probably get is around seventeen thousand, I think we budgeted one hundred and twenty thousand, so save the seventeen thousand if we can get that grant on that. And speaking of vehicles, right now, we've got some budget for this year, but right now we can't get no extra. Water and Sewer is also funded through the USDA grant to purchase the mini excavator that we budgeted, again, probably around seventeen, twenty thousand, but that's a lot better than ninety-three thousand, I believe, for that, if, if approval. Mentioning earlier about the attorney, we are working on some new ordinances or vending some of our existing ordinances, from downtown buildings to dogs, I assume we can get an attorney on, that'll be one of the first things that we tackle, hopefully that'll settle here in next month, and I'll actually finally hire someone to downtown coordinator position, had nine applicants that took the application through the month of July, started the interview process mid-October, and decided last week on a, on a person there, which is Lisa Moody, she's originally from Dillon, but been yonking Dillon for about thirty years, she's moved to that, um, closer to her family, she had a background in recreation and special events, wasn't anyone that I'd interviewed that had any background in grant writing, however, there is a class through the University of South Carolina that she is willing to take and pay for, I think it's like fifteen hundred bucks. So, I, I think it would be a fun hire, as I told her, as I told all the applicants that I interviewed, I, and I hope council is not even, I hope, uh, Downtown Community Alliance and the citizens realize, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, it's gonna be something that's gonna take time, um, and with that, three or four months ago, Dr. Wallace, you appointed a committee of three to start working on the benchmark program, so hopefully by the end of this month, first of next month, we can have those meetings with that committee, along with the downtown coordinator and some of the folks from the community alliance, and kinda figure out what we wanna do there, it'd be good to do something that we can see quickly, um, but also, we've got to realize, not only for myself but for council as well, that if we wanted to go this far, we've got to make a commitment to go that far, and commitment is not just saying, let's do this, 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 with the money, whether it comes from the city, or it comes from the county, or it comes from the state, but we've gotta, we've gotta make sure we did.
I meant to mention this, I don't, yeah, I'm sorry. No, what are we doing on the first bank building?
Right now, that's part of where she, this is where I'm gonna put the downtown coordinator, temporary, um, Dave and I met with FBI Mike, Tyler, or Richard, here about a month or so, they just kinda walked through, and so they can give us some ideas and maybe some cost estimates, then one upstairs, there is an upstairs that's got to be renovated per se, nothing wrong with, just need some rent, but as far as downstairs, just Dave and I looking and talking, anybody's welcome to go look at the building anytime you want, we may have, we've got to move some things on the front end where the heavy counters in the bank, get to take those out, but we think we can build a wall to kinda separate the actual office spaces from the lobby area, um, and then maybe use partitions, uh, to give us office spaces, but we, we think it's real beautiful, and hopefully find some grant money there to, to help us along with, 'cause I hate, we've got a nice building, and that second floor, eventually, we need to do something, but it has an elevator, so, if we're gonna have a public building, it needs an elevator, whether it's open to the public or not on the second floor, it still needs an elevator. Quick guess from what I've been told, in today's elevator system, it's not like what we've got at the welcoming, you know, city town complex, it's a little different today, everything is housed in one area, I'm afraid, instead of two or three different locations, probably around fifty grand at most for an elevator, just with elevator, and we still got to do some, some work there, but hopefully you guys can call me one day or a day to go look at it, see what you see there, but that's where I'm gonna house downtown four day, the temporary, 'cause I think that person needs to be downtown, um, the previous years that we had when we did that, where we also spent money and rent up here, we don't spend any money on that, so, do got that space.
We come up with a, um, job description?
For downtown?
For the downtown.
Yes.
And we, we all agree with that.
I thought you did.
Yeah, that's something I did. Maybe we can.
You can?
Maybe, maybe in the next pack.
Well, I, I will email it tomorrow.
I'll make sure I don't miss what you said, is you gonna have the police department, you gonna have the coordinator in there, whatever you want.
No, 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 temporarily, just the downtown coordinator will be there like a temporary, once we can get the police department there, that person will be located. I think that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Um, financial report?
Starting out with general fund, total of our account accounts is two million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. In our revenues, twenty-one versus twenty, we received two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars more in twenty-twenty than twenty-one, but that is due to the timing of the local option money and the Charleston money that we received, um, we received that in June of this year, or last year, June, we received it in July, so that, that's, that, um, so you're really not.
Not behind.
You're not, as a matter of fact, you're probably a little ahead, 'cause we receive more funds this year than we did last year, our expenses, um.
Let me, let me ask you, your sanitation fees look like they were off.
You're gonna see, you're gonna see it in September, 'cause that's when it looks done, the first of September instead of the thirty-first of August, so, you will see that, it'll look double the next, you know, next many months, okay? Our expenses, um, we were four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars more in twenty-one than we were in twenty-twenty, you know, that's just due to repairs and stuff, so, it's not a big difference there. Our water and sewer, our non-restricted accounts, we got a million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, in our restricted accounts, we got two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, fifty-seven dollars. In our difference in, um, twenty-one versus twenty on the revenues, we got a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars more in twenty-one, and, and due to that was cap fees and water sales, you know, that's the difference in it.
And, uh, along.
We got more in twenty-one than we did in twenty, and that's because the rates went up.
We, well, we, we, we had a rate increase, but also, you know, Purdue was on short time, they weren't working on Fridays for about six weeks or eight weeks in twenty-twenty, but the only reason I bring that up is, is that, you know, we, we enjoyed a hundred thousand. We're not gonna profit with seventy thousand dollars a month, every month, you know, for the rest of the year, but, you know, still, still, so.
Okay, and our repairs, we were thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars more spent in twenty-twenty than twenty-one, and that's due to repairs, home repairs. Stormwater, in our cash account, we got forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Our difference was a hundred and thirty-two dollars more in revenues in twenty-twenty than twenty-one, our expenses was two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars more in twenty-one than in twenty-twenty, um, you know, we're, if you took the mitigation and all of that out, it would be, we would've spent nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars more in twenty-twenty than we did in twenty-one. Our golf course, our, um, cash account, fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, and since then, I received a check of fifty thousand dollars Friday from the county, so for golf course, so, our difference in our revenues, seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars more in twenty-one than in twenty-twenty, so revenues are up there. In our expenses, we spent eighteen thousand, twenty-one dollars more in twenty-twenty than we did in twenty-one, and that is due to the pumps that we had by last year, and the papers.
Thirty-five, forty thousand pumps, so, that's good, but it's going in the right direction.
Our two percent hospitality funds, we've got a million, three thousand, one hundred dollars in the accounts, cash accounts, our revenues was nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars more in twenty-one than in twenty-twenty, and we got our four years remaining for the wellness center payments.
You know, one of the long-term goals, um, that we had talked about with, uh, with that money, looking at that, or was, um, we didn't even talk about the splash pad, you know, and, and, you know, we not spending a tremendous amount of money on that, but, um, you know, putting the pools, um, and I, I don't, FBI did the architecture, was that inside?
That was supposed to be the only one.
Yeah. Okay. So, we've got those, and, and, you know, Mike told me they, they still have those ball plans, so, I mean, we don't wanna be doing anything until we're down to two more payments, but it'd be nice to, if we're gonna move in that direction, and that's as our council, but, it'd be nice to go here and, and, and try to look at what that's gonna cost to build, and, um, we're gonna have to be ready at that two-year mark when we get ready to, as long as we, if we've got a million dollars in the bank, and we've got two more payments to make, we're a good place to, to get started, if we're gonna go in that direction.
I should've followed up in my, in my notes, but I had a request representing the days a month ago, he wanted some, some requests and receipts on, on recreations, but, what we were needing and what I'd like to see him doing, so I wrote a letter last week requesting well over a million dollars, the golf course for our neighborhood park, sports complex, and to do some things out here, develop the same, and whether or not, well, if he gets that funding, he asked, or I gave.
Yeah.
The discussion that he and I had back in the July office was that, was trying to get that into the new budget from the state, so.
Their, when does their fiscal year start?
Starts in July, so they're, they're working on the budget process now.
When does the part money come to us?
Well, whenever you spend the money on property.
When does that, when does that come to us?
Well, it comes out available every July, you know, and I've already requested twenty thousand for this splash pad, who is gonna go, but, but we don't get it 'cause we spend the money, and it's there for two years. That's all I have, is that.
All right. Citizens report? Yes, sir?
How's, uh, Jamie Moore?
We're not, we're not tied real close to that, but I understand that, um, moving forward.
Well, in fact, it's someone's gonna be here tonight to make the presentation, however, they couldn't because of COVID, they called in first last week, so they'll be here in October to, to give an update.
And they started doing any renovation?
Absolutely, they don't do anything particular, I rode by there today, and on the, I think it's Cleveland Street side of the auditorium, there's a Ford John out there, um.
Good first move. It's a good first move.
Yes, so, I know Hardy and I had met with their engineers a few months back, and on water and sewer on the slithings, and they have a crew of people in there, they had told us that, at that date, that there would be somebody there every day doing something, had they, had they done anything with you, Ben?
No, sir, we just approved the site plan.
But someone would be here next week, month, I mean, next month, and they're presenting.
Anyone else?
Um, Stephanie, uh, Dillon Community Alliance.
Thank y'all for having me, I will try to call quickly, so we don't end up in here before eight-thirty, um, I wanna say, on the splash pad, I just got back from the Main Street Directors Association, we had a three-day, uh, meeting in Florence, um, just in FYI, call and talk to those other cities that have the splash pad, I'm for the splash pad, but all of them say it is a lot of work, because D H treats it just like a pool, and they have the guys that have to monitor the water, the lady in Florence said, even though in terms, it's very small, it has like four or five little spats out there, when in the summertime, when it's really busy, she has to have a lifeguard out there, because they treat it like a pool, so, just something to be optimistic about.
And then that is correct, there's two ways to do it, uh, if you recycle the water, you do have to have a lifeguard, if you just use your water, it goes off to a storm drain, you do not have to have.
You have, do I say that again? You have to have a lifeguard if you recycle the water.
If you recycle the water.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But if you, I, um, Lacy, theirs is, they continue, they don't recycle the water, as the water comes off, it goes into a storm drain, so they don't have to have a lifeguard, but if you have to treat the water, then you have to have a lifeguard, that's always made that.
And she laughs, she's like, there is no way you can drown this little point out here.
But due to them having to treat the water.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right, anyway, thank y'all for everything that the city has done for VCA in the past, it's certainly appreciated, I hope y'all have been pleased with the things that we have done to bring the people to the city, and, um, I hope you're gonna be with me tonight, you know I'm up here not only to talk about, but the talk is a, the cost of an empty building on Main Street. You got a packet that, um, had a little brochure in there that went through the, um, the formulas to figure out how much a building on Main Street that was empty actually cost the city, um, it, uh, I did the math, and, and I did it with numbers that I had, so first that you're asked is to figure out approximate household income, so, I just estimated, uh, by rent, your residential rent, I used eight hundred as my number, 'cause I think that's like a reasonable rent here, um, and anyway, that comes out to about thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars a year, now, we know that's probably median income for our area, when I looked at the statistics, the median income, household income for the entire county was thirty-one thousand, and for the city was forty-three thousand, that was the median income per census statistic, now, I don't know how correct that is, but that's the only way I can look at that, so, anyway, then, if you see this other little, I'm going by this little sheet that has all the, um, the, the things on, if you look at that, and you take the total household income, um, take the after-tax amount, which the point eighty-seven is like, they take out, you know, that's what's left after taxes, eighty-seven percent of your pay tip, then if you look down to the annual expenditures, they're making the assumption that all households are going to spend ninety-three percent of what they earn, um, and so, it brings you over to the percentage spent on food away from home, they just use a formula to figure that out, so, for us, you know, eating out, we know we get a lot of money, but it's not all from ninety-five, it is from some of our people here in town, too, so, according to the numbers that I use, we're looking at like twelve hundred dollars roughly a month that people spend in food away from home, um, then you'll move to the, to the next page, um, again, we're looking at commercial, um, we looked at commercial rent this time, I used an average number of eight hundred dollars, I know buildings on Main Street run anywhere from really, really low to much higher than that, um, so, um, I ran through the little formula there, using the eight hundred dollars, so, um, and what this formula is determining is, if you have the rent based at eight So, and what this formula is determining is, if you have the rent based at eight hundred dollars, how much the business has to make in income to be able to support that rent and pay the bills? And for a building that's rented for eight hundred dollars, that person needs to bring in a minimum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in sales. So that's a thought for y'all. So then now when we go down to the next one, you can calculate the cost of a vacant building. So I ran through the numbers, because you're looking at annual commercial rent. I put about ninety-six hundred dollars. The sales volume necessary to make the space and be able to pay the rent, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I looked at operating ratios, just in general, I use the thirty percent figure for your labor costs. That comes out to thirty-six thousand dollars. If you put everything together, you look at the total earnings, the property tax that a building is gonna pay, advertisement that a business is going to have, their cost of labor and their utilities. The cost of an abandoned building on Main Street, any guess? Who has a guess? Come on.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand dollars, using our numbers. For every building that is empty on Main Street, we're losing seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
Financial impact to the community.
That's correct. And that's not including what you would pay the employees that work there that put that money back into the city. So seventy-five plus. So anyway, that's.
Usually that's a multiple of two and a half.
That's right.
Financial impact of your salary is, that's the financial impact on the community as it that one pays that one, and that one pays that one.
So approximately.
Fifty housing would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So approximately in our historic district, how many buildings do we have?
Give me a number.
Sixty. How many are vacant? At least twenty-seven. How much money are we losing a year? Dr. Wallace, in math?
Twenty-seven and a seventy-five, thirty, almost a million dollars.
Two million, isn't it? Two million dollars we're losing every year because all the buildings are vacant.
Financial impact.
Financial impact, okay. Let me restate it, financial impact.
We're not losing it, but it's lost to the community.
But I mean, it is a loss to all of us. I have a building on Main Street, you know, other people have, it's a loss to us. Foot traffic, we lose money, so on and so forth. But anyway, I wanted to come to you, and we all know our Main Street is failing. We know we have got to do something to put this Main Street back in order. In the past, y'all have done upfit grants. I do not like that word. Those did not work out very well for us for the most part. I want to, and you got this in your packet, I'd like to have y'all look at the possibility of what's called a stabilization grant. Because our buildings on Main Street need roofs, some of them may actually need structure stabilization, they need things done inside, which is going to stabilize our community from going down any farther than it is. Because the Main Street is the heart of continuing to build our community. Our census numbers, people from two thousand eleven to now, they've dropped tremendously. Like, we've lost a thousand people in the past two years according to the census numbers. So I don't know if that's right or not, but I just know the data that I have to look at. We want the thirty-fiver's age group that have children, that live here, that work here, to continue to stay here. There has to be things for them to do, and part of that is things on Main Street. We do have one restaurant that's getting ready to open up. I just spoke with her today. That is the refinery where the Kentire House used to be. She's waiting on a few pieces of kitchen equipment and then the final DHEC inspection. And her signs have been approved, but they're just waiting to get those up. So that's coming. We're all doing the best we can to help her along, but nobody gets DHEC in a hurry. There's nothing you can do to speed up DHEC. Anyway, what else? Nonprofit, okay. Dylan Community Alliance is a nonprofit. And y'all may already know this, but everybody does not. When you apply for a nonprofit, you have to have a reason to be nonprofit. And it can't just be, I wanna go out and do good in the community. It has to be a specific thing. So when we applied for our nonprofit, our specifics were to promote community development and tourism. That's our specifics. So whatever we do as a nonprofit, it has to be in that wheelhouse, moving in that direction. For instance, we couldn't go out and have a food drive as our nonprofit to feed the hungry because that's not in our wheelhouse. Our purpose is to promote community development and tourism. Whereas someone like Long-Term Recovery Group or Help in Hands, their wheelhouse is to help feed the hungry. So what I'm asking, you can have your little paper there, is for the city to make an investment in the downtown area. We, in the past, we did fifteen thousand dollars. Y'all couldn't give any of, hardly, well, I think we did give three thousand dollars of the facade grant money away last year. But we couldn't give the rest of it away. What we were hearing was, we need much more than that to bring our buildings up to where we can put somebody in on and get some rent out of them. And so here I am tonight, begging, pleading for much more than that. What I'm asking for from this council is that you commit one hundred thousand dollars to assist in the improvement of the Main Street area. We're gonna focus on those historical buildings. If you look at your paper, Lynn and I looked over this, that, you know, we talked it all out, but we don't have all the answers. We need your input as well. I am an extreme stickler when I write any type of contract. I believe that if you're gonna get, so what we're gonna do is hopefully break these grants down into a thirty thousand dollar grant. Because y'all saw with the fifteen thousand, you really don't get much for fifteen thousand. And labor is up, lumber is up, everything's more expensive these days. So thirty thousand dollars, they could get a roof, they could get their building stabilized, and they could get a little bit going on the inside. Because to hit that thirty thousand, they must put sixty thousand into that building. Now, that number is going to do one or two things. It's going to either make somebody say, I'm not gonna do anything with this building, but I can sell it at a decent price. Somebody can go in there, they can have paid a decent price, not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building. But if they pay a decent price, then they can put their sixty thousand in, get thirty thousand back when they've completed the job and everything is done as per code. They can get that money back, and we all will win because they would have been able to afford to rehab that building, to put somebody in it to, in a short, not a short period of time, but let's say ten years. In ten years, they're gonna see a real return on that investment. Whereas if they pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that building, they're not gonna have a whole lot more money to put into it to rehab. Because they can only put, well, they can put however much money that they have in there if they're millionaires and wanna do that. But most of the people around here are going to be looking for a small business loan, or they're gonna do a home equity loan to buy a business on Main Street and rehab it. And those generally are not, you know, millions of dollars. So what we're asking for is for y'all to dedicate a hundred thousand dollars to us to hand out all of these grants. I'm also, as y'all were talking about the county, I'm also going to the county next week and ask the same thing for them. Now, when you look at your paperwork, Lynn, help me out here. You get to where it says a hundred and fifty thousand is gonna be in the project. The reason I did not say two hundred thousand, because I want a hundred thousand for you and a hundred thousand from the county. But I want to take part of this money and use it as street skate types of things. Put flowers on the light poles, order some new banners for the poles, just things to spruce up our city. Maybe get some different kind of trees and get rid of the trees we have and start looking forward to our, our, our plan, our master plan. But if you look on the back page, let me see. This goes the same way as the other one did. All right, it says, and here's where I need some input. Once the project is completed, the stabilization grant we need property must be occupied for a minimum of twenty-four consecutive months post award by a rent-paying business that is licensed by the City of Dylan and governed by the rules of the Commercial Historic Overlay District use per code. Now, the reason I said that, I don't wanna give somebody thirty thousand dollars and then it not benefit the whole city by a business going in there. I wanna put that building to work when they're finished. But now Lynn and I went back and forth on this twenty-four consecutive months. Because, yes, I feel like with that amount of money, something should be expected and in writing rock solid. But here's the thing, what if they, like, okay, we play devil's advocate among our council, our board, and they were like, all right, what if when you get the project done, you can't find anybody to rent the building? Well, what did I say? I said, one, you don't work on your building six months to a year to get it to where it needs to be. If y'all haven't seen the condition of the buildings downtown, it's gonna take six months to a year for them to get them where they need to be. So that gives you time to fine-tune your business plan and be looking for a tenant. Because you shouldn't rehab a building if you don't have a business plan and a long-term goal of what's gonna go on after that. So anyway, we can help with the business plan, we can help with finding somebody to go in there. But I'm a firm believer that once the building is done, somebody needs to go in there. Now, the twenty-four months, Lynn says, what happens if somebody rents it for a year and then they decide, okay, I'm not good at this business, I need to move out? Well, they move out. Are we going to, you know, you don't usually move one tenant out and one right back in there in the same one. There's gonna be an overlap. So as a council, what are y'all thinking? How can we work through this so that we get a benefit of somebody being in there with specific terms?
Assuming we're gonna do the hundred thousand.
There is no assumption on my part. Y'all have, you have said many times you're gonna invest in Main Street.
You know, having some personal experience with Todd and Lintle, you know, we kinda left our buildings not completely restored because we didn't want, you know, what people wanted to do with them. And we didn't wanna construct and restrict. We left some floors open so that they could put in plumbing and things like that. But we, you know, been a little underwhelmed with, you know, the people who wanna go down and spend money finishing the project or, you know, you know.
But that comes back to you didn't have a business plan, you rented the building.
No.
And I planned for these people to have a business plan.
No, we didn't.
The good buildings are. But again, and that's where we kinda go a different direction.
But we didn't need.
That I see, the building you're speaking, looks a whole lot better than the previous.
Yeah, yeah.
But at the same time.
Down the roof, aren't we?
Yeah. At the same time, we've got to make a determination if, whether you call it upfit grant or stabilization grant, doesn't really matter. But we gotta have a definite commitment.
And possibly.
A definite time to say, yes, this project is completed, they get their money. And what is that definite definition of being completed? You know, we'll use your building if you, tell me, is that complete? It's not great to be moved in, but you accomplished what your goal was.
Right.
And that's the hardest part, is trying to figure out what that's gonna be. And I could give you recommendations, Stephanie and Community Alliance could give you recommendations, but you guys are the ones that are gonna have to make that determination if we go that route. But that's the reason we stopped, because we really did a very raw.
Yeah. I think part of, I like the one-third, two-thirds match, you know? I mean, we're gonna give them a third, and that way there's a lot more skin in the game by the investor. I think that if we make the back end of that punishable, you're gonna have to pay us back if you don't do this, this, and this, you're gonna have people not wanna be a part of it.
Right. But we can't have no, no repercussions.
We need return on that thirty thousand. Maybe, I don't know, if they don't do certain things, then part ownership of the building, I don't know. That's why we didn't deter.
No, my question is, my question is, you said you got sixty buildings up there?
Fifty buildings.
How many is English there, Stephanie?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So with the stabilization grant that you're speaking of, why can't you generate a list of the people that would be willing to wanna apply for this?
We can.
Because in the meantime, when we done the upfit grants last time, we only had five people.
Right.
But they were only awarded three, too. And we can make that list, but there's no need for me to run and find owners from every, from everywhere until I have a definite plan that says this is gonna happen, you wanna get in on it.
Well, I don't think we can come up with a plan that you want until we see the people's willing to put the money into their building.
Maybe not the number plan, but I need a commitment to.
Where would we?
We're gonna be doing something.
We could get, you know, outside of the budget, where would we get a hundred thousand? Well, ARP money, which you took.
Well, you could use, again, you could use some of our two percent money. Maybe you could do some things.
And I also.
Again, and you're not, believe this, you know, we could fund a half a million, but we're not gonna spend it all at one time. Because that's one of the things that, that we're, one of the things that we've got to look at is that based on the way we do the side grant, and based on what we've done in the past with the upfit grant, and based on what's being proposed here for what is now called a stabilization grant, we do it in our budget sheet. A lot of times that can't happen.
Yeah.
So we've got to look at maybe expanding that over a two-year period. But sometimes, you know, if you've ever dealt with a little bit of construction renovation that y'all doing, Stephanie has seen, and I've seen, Penny's seen. You know, we can have a plan, begin work today on renovating something.
Yeah.
But until the contractor shows up, until the materials show up, I mean, everything is so dragging and lagging in time. I don't think anybody could do anything in a year's time.
Well, structure costs is down, but that's.
How many vacant buildings do we have in town? I know it's ready for a tenant to walk in and start their business.
Sarah, right now, I mean, is that a vacant, probably two?
One, I got one.
Well, you do, you have one of the three.
Is your question that, the reason you're maybe opposed because the facade grants haven't been working, is that what you're saying?
No, but I'd like to see the DCA, since you're leading this role and trying to give this information, is get a list of building owners who would be willing to put this type of money into a building. Because in the previous past, we've only had five people that wanted to get the fifteen.
How much was it?
Fifteen thousand dollars. And you want a commitment from the council, and I understand that, but I would like to see a ten or fifteen people to do this.
Well, sadly, what we've got going on with the facade grants, only good for the people who are situated that can enhance their outside building. Right now, I get a call probably seven out of ten a day on rental, rentals. And people want to open up, but they don't have the money to fix things. They can't fix it at all, they need to come into their place. And all these buildings downtown, if you're taking a walk, you don't have to go in and look at them. They're not up to par. And the people who own them are the same people who own them. They own multiple ones. So I have, I have gone to them. So, I have, I have gone to them, not anything to do with the alliance, forget that. I'm trying to do it for me and my personal thing as a, as a realtor, trying to make some money here. They don't want the facade grant because they need much more than that to go. And the response is, well, I won't get to, I wanna, I wanna renovate, I wanna sell it, I just wanna, I wanna renovate later. Well, it's been a year. I mean, I reach out to all of them, I've got a list of every person, I've gone through every, written on their name, got their numbers, sent their messages, and the same people aren't willing to do anything unless they have major incentives to do it. But nobody that's gonna rent and lease them are gonna rent and lease them how they are. They can afford that, we should expect none of that. The people who own them and own multiple ones, what are they doing?
Right. I understand what you're saying, but I don't have it. Do you have the list of all the building owners uptown?
I do, and I'd be glad to get that.
You'll give me that.
But here's, here's another thing that, that I see. We were talking about, the, the most that we would agree in first would be thirty thousand per project. Meaning, they had spent sixty. You know, I don't know how many sixty thousand is gonna do on a particular building, but some of these owners don't have the sixty thousand.
Right.
And, and that's, you know, that, that's another issue, man, you know? And I guess if, it's like a house, if you're gonna own it, you got to.
Let me just say this, if they've got a building like that and they're getting two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, a month five for vacancy, uh, they're even like fish or cut bait. And it pushes them to sell those to people that are willing to make that investment. Um, and that, unfortunately, that's, that's where we are.
And they may have to. And if you're. I'm gonna go back to Sarah just a second. Um, how many businesses are looking to come to Main Street Dillon right now?
Hey, I just get people calling all day, every day about.
So, if you got two buildings ready to go, are you showing them new took buildings?
Yeah, but you gotta look, one's for lease and two are for buying. And the buying on the two of them that are on there, actually, there's three now. I know Linda Highsmith's the one, too. They're all a hundred and fifty or above. So, you gotta think, I mean, these are, and some of them, I mean, the other two, you know, yours, bragged off that Main Street, Robbie Owens got one, he had somebody in it, had a mental situation, had to move out, or working on getting that one filled. But besides that, there's no more. We got one, another one beside Dillon Realty that's got the up top leased out. Or I just saw the market today, just put on Instagram and around. But that is for sale, and it probably will go faster because they have a rental income coming from the top that they can use, you know, as well as when they, they purchase it. But.
But that building was mostly completed.
Yes, yes. But in general, when people, I mean, if you look at the owners, not just owners, but when they bought these, had these buildings on Main Street, all of them were almost before both of our floods. So, now, they didn't know when they bought these or inherited these or anything like that, that they're gonna go through what they're going through, which is their flooring needs to be completely fixed and the roof needs to be fixed. If they got what was underneath, where, I mean, they got a, you know, heating and cooling system. So, those are the biggest expenses, and we're just starting there. That's why the amount is so important. Besides putting up, put up, what's it called? A sign up or a owning. That is a real deal. We gotta get to the next part, they just gonna sit there and get old, cause it's, what are they gonna do with it? They're not gonna fix the inside, and they're not gonna sell it, is what we're dealing with.
Um, the other question I had, Dr. Wallace, is the hundred, a hundred thousand dollars that you're asking the council to get to, what are, what are your plans back?
That is the thirty thousand dollar reward.
Thirty thousand back.
Back.
You know, they get, we do thirty, they do sixty. So, that enough.
I thought you were gonna give you a hundred thousand on top of your stabilization grant.
No, no, no.
She, she had mentioned a hundred and fifty in the draft.
But some of that is hoping to come from the county, that's why.
The only thing I could see in it is the twenty-four months, consecutive months should probably be a little bit too steep.
So, you want twelve?
Twelve months would probably be a good thing to make post award, but the only problem I've got with it is, I, I think maybe if the DCA could take the twenty-seven properties. I want you to do research on these twenty-seven properties. I wanna know who owns them, I wanna know why they're not using them, I wanna know what the expectancy says to upgrade them, and I just wanna know the story behind each building. If they need to be condemned, then the city needs to do something with it. And I've talked about this for the last few years, and there's things that we could do with these empty, dilapidated buildings. And if it's bringing down the building beside, beside you, as I know Dr. Wallace has got one right now beside him, then the city ought to have the right to go and take it for public use.
Sure.
And if we don't start building that, y'all, get, pull your building down.
And, and I will say this.
One across from you right now is gonna gain one down.
We, we can do this, but we're all volunteers with full-time jobs outside of this. You're talking about a lot of time and a lot of work, and are we doing that for free? I mean, even if we have to get somebody to come and look and appraise the building, that's not a free service, so we gotta have some investment some kind of way, I mean.
Well, Glenn, is anyway, the city could figure out why these buildings are not being used? I've given, I've talked to anybody.
I don't know that the city or anybody in this room can figure out how you do that exactly. You own a building, you own a main. I don't know why it's empty. I could ask you why it's empty, but doesn't mean what you tell me is fact.
Well, then why not ride by some that looks like it's got materials stacked up in it? And they're being used for storage? I don't understand that.
Well, they're not, they, they got tickets here shortly, didn't they?
Okay. Well, that's one clause that we would add. But the point is, we still need to know the history behind it and why they're not being used. I mean, what good is the piece of property if it can't be rented? And that's all. If not, sell it.
But they won't, and we can't make them, so I don't know.
But what you're saying, though, is if they bring it up the code and they don't find a tenant, they're gonna, the city's gonna find, is that what you're saying?
That's me.
We're gonna talk, get it up the code. The building owner is gonna get it up the code. He can't find a tenant, but he's still like to pay the city to build it every month that he don't have a tenant going in that building.
I would love that, because why would you wanna give him thirty thousand dollars if he doesn't have a plan to put somebody in it?
This is something different. What, what you're, we're, you're talking about is a vacancy fee.
Right.
And we talked about that a little bit earlier in May, before the meeting, but, you know, say you do get it up the code, you still can't rent it. You know, as long as your rent's reasonable, I'm not sure that, you know, we're gonna wanna continue to, uh, you know, buy them.
We just said they can't hire them, but for six months.
We wanna, we're gonna find them until they get it to them. And, you know, and then.
Yeah, I, it's kinda hard. This is a working process. Like you said, we gotta give you a target.
We don't know, we don't know how we're gonna do this. Because if you know that a building can be in tip-top shape, you still got to find, if you just had property on, uh, business, you still got to find somebody to rent.
Look, the concern I have is we got twenty-six empty buildings, and right now, only two's ready to be leased out.
Well, I tell you, there's twenty-six, there's probably ten of them are owned by two people. Just gonna throw it out there.
Okay.
And I will also say, um, Firehouse Subs, we missed a great opportunity to get them on Main Street. Their business model is very consistent for being in a building on a main street, and look at what we lost, because we're not ready for that.
Explain in detail, more detail, what do you mean by that? We lost out by, and we're not, and we're not ready for it.
Okay. If, if you own a Firehouse Sub franchise, and I say, come on Johnny, let's go down to Main Street, I got a building that would be great for you to go in, alright? I take you into the single one of Dr. Wallace's building. You look at it, it, it's good-looking, it's ready for, to be prepared for whatever type of business. If you've ever been in a Firehouse Subs, you know, down the right side is usually their kitchen and on the left side is where they sit, okay? You think about the long buildings we have, that's a perfect setup for that. But if you walk in that building and then you turn around and you look across the street, do you know what you see? That's why Firehouse Sub, you wanna put your.
That's what I'm trying to say, why do we got those so many vacant buildings uptown?
Because the.
Firehouse Sub would never come to Main Street Dillon, they would be out there with another restaurant. I'm not, I'm not gonna speak what you're saying, but what bothers me is all the vacant buildings we got uptown, and none of them, except two is ready to be leased out, that is the big issue.
I've got plenty of investors that are low.
But what has the city to do, have we dropped the ball somewhere?
No, but I'll tell you this, I've got plenty of investors that are so excited about Dillon, that wanna help Dillon, but they got to be able to buy something to help Dillon. When nobody's gonna sell, I don't, I, you know, Sarah.
And, and you know the city of Dillon.
And we don't have any incentive.
Johnny, you know the city of Dillon could have dropped the ball, because have we, have we been consistently finding people? We did at one point, and then we had to stop because of a jury trial, and then COVID hit. So, maybe it is harsh, I'm not saying the brain, but maybe there is something that the city could have done a little better there before the buildings got completely to where they can't be inhabited.
I just wonder.
Across the street from that is gonna, is where we're generating this first bank building.
Yeah, but there's one building over there that you could probably pull a piece of plywood off and it all might fall on your head.
Well, well, about. The only thing the thirty thousand something do is people probably gonna go and put a roof on the drive-out. And that's positive, and obviously, if they do that, they need to have a plan to use the building.
Or sell it, maybe that's why we need to sell it.
I think that.
I think the three-person group that we're gonna sit down and look at, the downtown, we probably, you know, that probably is a good group to also come up with some stipulations and rules about how we use the, um, that, that, I don't know that, um, I don't know that we need to come to a vote on this tonight.
No, you can't, you can't do that.
But, um.
And the other thing I'd like to say is, you know, y'all are always asking, how do other cities fund their downtown renovations and all of that? You're not gonna wanna do this, they fund it because they own the utilities, and that's what they pay to rehab all the downtown. Florence, prime example, they own their own utility, water sewer for us, they may have the electric co-op, I don't know what they have, but they use their own utilities to pay to rehab the thing.
Well, part of our problem with that is, is that, you know, we, we, we have grant money that we use in order, we, we own our water sewage, we own our garbage, but our water sewage money has to be kept totally separate from our, from our general fund money, and this would be general fund money. Um, so we got a problem with that.
Well, is there a possibility that we could offer incentives to try to help businesses come downtown?
Well, we, we, we do have some, um, and again, the incentive that y'all passed two or three years ago is nothing earth-shadow, by no means. If it was a new construction, you waived water sewer tax fees. If it's a, another one was.
Restaurants.
Restaurants. You, you, you gave them a discount for the first three years on hospitality tax. Uh, we give them discounts on building permits, um, things of that nature over a certain period of time.
But does the new business owner that you're speaking to, Sarah, know that these incentives apply?
I don't know, I don't know. That would be great, if I had a package, I'd love to go and do anything to help.
You should have that.
Every new business owner that I meet with, the one that's gonna open up the refinery and Brad, when he was looking at his restaurant, they get a packet that has all of that information in it, so.
I send Steph on the people, she always goes.
Is there something we can look at, or we can go to the phone somewhere to help? Get businesses in there somewhere?
Well, that would be, I mean, you don't wanna deal with taxes, you don't wanna do a decrease in, in property tax. I mean, that would be the only, the only thing you could do. And again, the more you spend, the bigger your, your discount is on something. You know, from the hospitality side of that tax, if there's a restaurant that opens up this new, you know, over a three-year period, they, they'd save a little money, but that's the money they gonna get from the customer anyway, whether they're charging that tax or not charging that tax. There's, there's really not a lot of need there.
And I don't, I mean, I guess I will learn shortly what y'all are looking at with fines, but having been in Florence, and we're not Florence, but I'm just saying, I asked them what their fine was, a thousand and fifty dollars a day. And the, and the motto is, if they don't fall in line, we fine them until they sell their building.
That's wrong.
I have one.
See Jack.
See Jack, yes, Jack. He got that in, in legal issue or something, and you should have been on.
Figure the contract.
Which I had a phone call with Daddy that someone is interested in the possibility of you to, to.
Okay.
Perfect, so I'm sending in some information.
Perfect, please, good.
Thank you.
So, we don't go to eight-thirty, thank you.
Sorry. And we're meeting with Glenn tomorrow to discuss, not we, I say we, not I, but we're the committee that, um, coordinates with the city, um, because the Main Street approach has four different committees, and, uh, Sarah keeps our property up, and there's our treasurer and our, um, our, uh, event planner, too. So, anyway, we're meeting with Rhett, with, uh, Glenn tomorrow to discuss and write up the, um, document as to how the Dillon Community Alliance and the new coordinator are going to work together. My guess is probably, and Glenn has said this, something along the lines of a public-private partnership. And then after that, we'll figure out when we can meet, because we're ready to go, we're ready to roll.
And that's eleven o'clock tomorrow?
No, that's at one tomorrow.
You can't change that.
Okay.
The city, the city is doing well managing the general fund. We're doing well managing, uh, our water sewage, and I think we're doing okay on recreation. We probably need to do some other things on recreation, but, um, the, the whole downtown revitalization plan is, is a bit overwhelming for me. Um, I just, and I don't know about the people on this committee, on this council, uh, being, uh, that creative, and, uh, you know, maybe having them do this, given that liberty is something that we need to do. But answering back COVID with us, we would, we wouldn't have total control of the funding and, and get those funds in, but, um, it's, it's, it's something that we all want to happen. Uh, I don't pretend to have the skill sets. Uh, you know, maybe somebody else will, the council does, and, and, but we, we be creating things. We're learning this new process of allowing somebody else to maybe take on these new roles. But, uh, anyway, uh, thank you for your effort, and all of y'all. Alright, um, so old business, ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash eleven annexation of sixteen-hundred block Commerce Row. Um, this is, uh, second reading, this is the property that we own. The, uh, he, behind the side, just in behind, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash twelve annexation of Trinity Behavior Center, seventeen-nineteen Commerce Row. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen, SRF, uh, on, uh, SRF one. Uh, second reading, this is for the lift station, Hillside Drive, Hillside Drive Lift Station. This is loaned for one being six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, with one percent interest over twenty years.
Can I get a motion?
I'll get a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, new business, the wide end, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen, annexation of Reeves Avenue and three-oh-one. Do we, any explanation on that? Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, sir, it's the, uh, property, I'm setting northeast corner, northwest corner, sorry, uh, Reeves Avenue and three-oh-one. Um, apparently have a house, and, uh, there's a few mobile homes that's on their lot. And, uh, it had a change by two or three. And, uh, it had a change, about two or three changes ownerships. And according to council policy, whenever they're requesting our utilities, they have to be willing to annex their property to the city limits.
This is a north way, old business?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do y'all get a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, resolution seventeen dash twenty-one authorizing, uh, submission of an application by the city of Dylan to the Division of Community Grant Programs, South Carolina Department of Commerce, Lucius Road, and Eighteenth Avenue Pump Station, uh, upgrades. This is through the CDB grant, um, which directly costs us roughly eight hundred sixty-one thousand, the CDB, CDB grant money would be, it's seven hundred fifty. Now, this is not embedded out and because they're grant first. Uh, can I get a motion? Second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Um, eight tax appointments. Yeah, um, I'm trying to remember what I said. We, eight tax, the committee that's appointed by council, there are seven members. They're by state law, they have to represent certain areas. Hospitality industry are the, is the main category. We have two seats that are open that need to be filled by someone in the food industry. Richard Cowler with Breaking Bridges is located on South First Avenue. And Joan Meekin with Southern Pride is on North First Avenue, has been recommended to be appointed to this board. Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. And then planning his own appointment, uh, which is District Two, Mr. Cowler, he's gonna come back next month with the nomination of a candidate. We don't need to do that tonight.
I think that, I counsel over some four, Johnny?
Yes, sir, uh, not to speak on the I seventy-three, just come back up in the meetings here later. And everything is great, what you're talking about tonight, Stephanie, but if we don't try to keep it from building this I seventy-three, this will drive buildings. So I ask, can we do a resolution to show that we're not in favor of I seventy-three?
We did, we've done two or three over the years, we can sure to do another. Absolutely, because with that, um, one of the representatives in the Orange County area is pushing for number nine, Wyden. For that purpose and like that, I think we should support that.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, we can bring back the resolution next month.
Um, I know we haven't talked about it in a while, about the bonuses for the floors, but I want us to consider, and I don't know if anybody spoke about it or not, the volunteer firemen. I'd like them to be included in some kind of a bonus because they've worked through the pandemic and they were there for us. And ninety-five percent of our fire department is volunteer. So, I mean, I'd like for us to take that up sometime in the near future and see what we can do for them also.
Well, we need, that would come from the American Rescue, and, and that's something we haven't really dove into. You know, we, I talked to you and told you what some of the monies would be used for. Um, soon as we hear back as well from our auditor, who was gonna look at lost revenue that we had during that time period, there's some money that we can do some things with out of this, but yeah, I think they should be included along with the other hall room, for the, for the hall. Because we, we were.
Um, and a couple of people, I don't know if it's been taken care of or not, Patty for the freeways here at the WELM Center, that said that it's tore, the benches are torn.
I coming in this month.
And, um, another thing, we, we need to talk about it tonight, but we haven't lately, uh, in past times, is the building behind the finance department, um, right near the corner of, across from Bristol Avenue. You had talked to some of the people, I forgot their names, being, right behind the finance company.
Oh, Madison State?
Yeah. I don't know if we dropped the ball on it and where we're going with it, but.
They still aren't, it's, they were supposedly, it's never went into pro day. It's, there's several that say they're the owners, but who, nobody knows who they're owners of.
But this is what concerns me, it's got a bill holding.
Mm-hmm.
And hurricane season, I think, is really getting ready to take off now. If that building was to collapse, there's no telling what kind of damage it could do. Um, I know we're getting ready to discuss about the attorney, and I would like to make that a priority for him on his list or her list, to, um, address that, because that's something that needs to be done, we need to tear that building down. Very.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Ron?
Johnny?
Um, I have a couple of things here on the, I guess, if you gave us some stuff on this activating, um, vacant properties, these are a couple.
Yes.
That process on that second page here, two or three, and that's what I was talking about, about even business bills and, um, final less vacant property. And just coming up with something that we can see that where we need to go with it, which would be, I think, helpful. And I'm not saying to do it every night, but it's just.
I'm sure Sarah already has it, yeah.
And in downtown four day, if you did.
In the downtown four day, it would be, it's consistent with that, but another thing helps these myths about planning downtown. I have to see slowing down traffic, speeding up, and strong downtown square, wide roads, and ample free vehicles. But I, I tell you, I strongly disagree with that, and I'm just going by our report for benchmark. And, I mean, it's hard to imagine the eight to nine thousand vehicles per day go down our Main Street. And just off US five oh one, three oh one, nine to twelve thousand. He told me, I met with this guy in this, I talked to him for three hours in my office. He told me that on one Friday, there was over twenty-eight thousand cars went through our downtown. Now, I know we did a, yeah, in one day.
You would?
Yeah.
Who did that study?
Ask him again, I want.
That's not here, that, that's right here in your benchmark.
Okay.
It says eight to nine thousand per day, nine to twelve vehicles per day.
And they made, hopefully they got that information from DOT.
Well, I saw the lining out there, I know the guy did it, I saw it today, yeah. Do you know how busy downtown is? That's the long cars of the day that's running across the line. All right, here's the only thing I'm, what I think, and I don't wanna put my, my finger on it, is, and of course, Amtrak was fifty-four, over fifty-four hundred for the whole year of banking, which is four hundred and fifty a month relative for someone going to the train station. Now, the myth where I would flunk that is, I know we changed our complexity of downtown basically thirty odd years ago. And whatever date that was, it doesn't really matter, twenty-five, thirty years ago. I think that we forced, we made some decisions at the time, we were good at that period of time. But the way Dylan's designed, y'all, and I talked to a good friend of mine that's retired from DOT now, which was an engineer. He said, the problem we had is that you squeezed it tight and you pushed a Raffa Bull Guard of other roads in your community, in which I think we did. He told me the best thing for Dylan, in which we're getting ready to have a major project, hopefully on thirty-four to four lanes. If that happens, we'll have more cars coming through middle of Dylan, only because it goes to three oh one and nine and fifty-seven. And it's never gonna change. Now, we have to keep our wide streets, and I think, for me, that's a no brainer. Because if you don't, we got other property and we've already bought behind these buildings. You have to utilize that, there's no way that we're gonna, I mean, something happened twenty-five, thirty years ago and we can all contest it out. What happened, I have no earthly idea, but it ran on the south downtown. People are not willing to invest money into a building they can rent for three hundred bucks. And I hear clients coming in me on a database and saying that. I could, uh, put two hundred valid hours of a building that I rent for three hundred to four hundred dollars.
Something that happened then was loss. I mean, that, and that's what drives up downtown. Another thing that happened was Walmart. Walmart killed that town. And, and, you know, Walmart is, you know, it's, it's just hard to compete. And, and you can go one place and park in one park and, but basically get anything that you need. And that, but that's what, it's not just in Dylan, it, and I, I'm gonna challenge a little bit. If you're coming from ninety-five, you're coming down thirty-four to get, you know, towards the beach, um, you're going through Dylan. Dylan is not your biggie.
But the more cars we have, the more possibility they will stop.
Well, I know, but I think that.
I see a head shaking, but you got to realize that we're on nine ninety-five, we're not Mullins American. And we're not Harpsville and we're not in these other communities. We're a community on nine ninety-five.
Yeah. And it's, it's.
Where they more lane out highway Stephanie, it will change the complete complexity of downtown.
Yes, it's going to make everybody continue to race their downtown. And the point of making smaller, narrower streets is so they slow down and say, oh, there's a nice shop over there, let me pull in and shop.
I don't, I don't wanna do the answer, I mean, I, I.
If you do that, if we ever do that, they'll go to Calhoun Street, Calhoun Street will be your next growth pattern instead of Raffa Bull Guard. Raffa Bull Guard is always a blossom. Ca, um, Martin Luther King and First Avenue, all the way down that road will obviously probably be our next growth area. And you might not think that, but they will. We're pushing it away from us. That's my fault. I've been there all my life, been there a lot longer than you have, ever since day one.
But I have a retail business on Main Street, I know what happens with traffic.
The more numbers you get in front of you, the more likelihood someone will stop. Always remember that, it's all about numbers, y'all. Anyway, that's all I got.
But, we, we got a, in the, in the streets, we have, uh, gonna be a favor.
Yeah, I bet you brought that up, I need that information, I think.
I texted.
Dr. Wallace and Jay had submitted it to TIN, if you got any roads in your district that need to be resurfaced, then let's team a note by the end of this week, TIN.
I'm not, yeah, I'm talking to you about, uh, you got a whole other piece of the next, how, how, what is my, now, it matters to me, yeah, I mean, I.
I did, they just asked me to give them a street that need to be resurfaced.
I got that one, program net, with two and a half million.
Give, give TIN the name, yeah, because what they'll do in October, they'll go and ride.
Like, you won't go, it won't be a bar, no?
They'll go and ride this year. Thanks for bringing that up, I'm glad.
On the, take, I use, I place that, uh, for, you know, for, for, Carl, y'all. Mr. Carl, go, over there.
Round the park, right?
Okay, you take him and there's some problems over there on Third Avenue. High Avenue and on, that, that. He drove us over high now there, rich, okay, you know, with. Why you can't, why you, probably can't hire, uh, individual people to do that? And then they don't pay, put on tax, they get, if, if the person that do it, it's true.
If it's something you think the fire might do, then it's not the issue.
There you go. Okay, tell me on the ball, why we hadn't had any tournament in Dylan, in, uh, in that, in.
Two months. About different causes of rates. You know, changed the rates, what, two years ago?
We didn't take it back down. Virgin and Pope over there, no? Calvin City, you think you want to figure what you're doing? They're, what, could something about, uh, you, you're, you're not here to provide, come here, um, many people. I did that, you're not a problem, I did, that's all, I did, that's all I got.
Uh, Glenn, I, once again, did you ever talk to DOT about this road? What I have brought up a couple every time, about making it where no through traffic, eighteen wheelers? We have, and we have to give them an alternative source. Well, they go on the up and come back around. I understand that, just like we had several years ago, uh, Main Street being no truck traffic. Right. Which is in our books, but the state doesn't recognize it because there's not an alternative source. Cause I don't understand why there wouldn't be an alternative source when it's like, just they go like an extra, or behalf of a mile, but they avoid. A school, a school, a daycare, alternative behaviors, and or you cross over or whatever the traffic. You go into a place where you can't hardly take a left, and if an eighteen wheeler tries to take a right to go that way, and you can't hardly see the car spinning, I mean, it's a wonder someone hasn't got a kill out there.
Yeah.
But I could ask you, cause I'm gonna request. Good luck, stoplight. I mean, you go to parts, you can't take, you can't do a through traffic through, uh, where the bomb was dropped years ago, or a bar pull up or whatever. You can't turn off of three or one and catch back up to, uh, whatever that is, what is it? Seventy-eight or twenty, yeah, you can't take that road if you're an eighteen wheeler. Down by the road? Yeah. I mean, if you're talking about. You used to save a lot, a lot amount of commerce here, just driving up a little ways and turning, I don't know. And, and to me, it makes a lot more sense. I just think it's dangerous out here, I think you got that curve right here to WELM Center, you got some foot traffic, I, I just think someone's gonna be killed. And I'm gonna also request for a stoplight, which I did, we did at Commerce three oh one. Let me say this, if I'm an eighteen wheeler driver, I would hope they wouldn't let me go down there because when you enter down there, you're in a bad situation when you get to that stop sign. You're in eighteen.
Yeah, yeah. Cause you can't see cars coming down.
No, you can't hardly see it in a vehicle regrouping there, so I don't know, that's all I got. All the requests, yeah. Tim? You good? All right. Um. Yeah.
As far as the line, I, I thought y'all did a great job, cause we, they have, they do, and do this job. The Main Street is still the same way it was three years ago, but they, we can't make them do nothing, maybe somebody else can do it.
Thank you. All right, uh, make a motion, take a session, discuss.
Make a motion.
Say it, I'm gonna make a motion.